Dr. Morthe is joining us soon. And our remaining board members, we will do a new call to order after they have been sworn in officially to the board for the 2021 year. President's announcement, adequate notice of agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News in the record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on January 6th, 2021 in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Will now raise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm now going to read the election results from the November 3rd, 2020 election. Election results are as follows, candidates for three-year terms with the board. We had three candidates for three, each for a three-year term. Linda Ziccone, Rich De Silva, and Mr. Matthew Park. At this time, I'm now going to conduct the oath of office for our new board members that are going to be joining us for the 2021 school year. Ms. Ziccone, we'll go with you first. If you'd please unmute yourself and read into the record the oath of office for school board member. Uh, no, you can do a seated.
I, Linda Ziccone, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Linda Ziccone, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of a member of the Board of Education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19-4-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in New Jersey S 18A 12-1, and that I will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Coe. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Silva, if you would read the oath of office, please.
I, Richard De Silva Jr., do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Richard De Silva Jr., do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19-4-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in New Jersey statute 18A 12-1, and that I will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you, Ms. Silva. Congratulations. And Dr. Park, if you would, please unmute yourself and read your oath.
I, Matthew Park, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people. I, Matthew Park, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19-4-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJS 18A 12-1, and that I will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Dr. Park, and welcome. Uh, with that, we're now going to have a roll call of the 2021 Mawa Board of Education. Mr. Copeland.
Here.
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
Denise.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Kismarski. Ms. Konico. Dr. Morthe.
Here.
Dr. Park.
Here.
And Ms. Ziccone. Thank you, everybody. At this time, we're going to conduct our reorganization Board of Education. I will, at this time, from any of the board members, take nominations for board president for the 2021 school year. Ms. De Silva.
Like to nominate Mr. Kismarski for president?
Are there any other nominations from members of the board? Okay, um, seeing none, at this time, we'll have a roll call vote for Mr. Kismarski to be board president for the 2021 calendar year. Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Kismarski.
Yes.
Ms. Konico.
Yes.
Dr. Morthe. Dr. Morthe, one more time, we had the speaker off.
Sure, yes.
Thank you. And Ms. Ziccone. Congratulations, Mr. Kismarski. With that, I'll bring the gavel over to your seat. And Ben, at your leisure, please, you can take over the meeting and have nominations for first and second vice president. Thank you very much. With that, looking for nominations for first vice president. Wesley. Anyone else have any other nominations for first vice president? Seeing none? We do. Okay, so we'll have a, yeah, a roll call vote at this time for Mr. De Silva to be first vice president for the 2021 year. Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Kismarski.
Yes.
Ms. Konico.
Yes.
Dr. Morthe.
Yes.
Dr. Morthe, one more time again. Sorry about the issues.
Take a.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
And Ms. Ziccone. Okay, congratulations, Rick. Like nominations for second vice president? Anyone would like to make a nomination?
Like to nominate Leslie Konica.
Leslie Konica, anyone else have any nominations? Seeing none, Kyle. Uh, for second vice president for the 2021 year, Leslie Konico, Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Ms. Konico.
Yes.
Dr. Morthe. Dr. Park.
Yes, yes.
Ms. Ziccone. And Mr. Kismarski.
Yes.
Okay, congratulations, Leslie. All right, next item up, the readoption of existing bylaws, policies, and regulations. Coming out of motion. Well, Rick, Mr. Gallo. Roll call for item number four, readoption of existing bylaws, policies, and regulations. Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Ms. Konico.
Yes.
Dr. Morthe.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Ziccone. And Mr. Kismarski.
Yes.
Okay, number five, naming of the official newspapers. Denise. Second. Okay, uh, roll call for item number five, official newspapers. Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Ms. Konico.
Yes.
Dr. Morthe.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Ziccone. And Mr. Kismarski.
Yes.
All right, appointments, as in past years, there are items 1 through 17, I believe. If there are any, anybody that wants to take them, take one out, let me know, otherwise, we can just move them as a whole. Someone would like to make that motion? Uh, Mr. De Silva, seconded by Mr. Copeland. Okay, uh, roll call on appointments 1 through 17. Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Konico.
Yes.
Dr. Morthe.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Ziccone. And Mr. Kismarski.
Yes.
Um, next up, we have approvals 1 through 5, but I'd like to do 5 separately, if that'd be all right, the code of ethics. So if I could have a motion on 1 through 4, Mr. Gallo. Seconded by Ms. Ziccone. Okay, for roll call on approvals 1 through 4, Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Ms. Konico.
Yes.
Dr. Morthe. Dr. Morthe. Okay, we'll come back to Dr. Morthe. Uh, Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Ziccone. And Mr. Kismarski.
Yes.
Item number five, board member code of ethics. If you got a motion. Mr. Gallo, seconded by Ms. Konica. I think she's back now. Okay, uh, for roll call on item number five, board member code of ethics, Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Ms. Konico.
Yes.
Dr. Morthe.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Ziccone. And Mr. Kismarski.
Yes.
And if I could have a motion to adjourn the reorganization meeting. Mr. Denise, seconded by Ms. Konica. Uh, we have everybody here, we could dispense, or we could go for it, go right in, okay? Would you like me to?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, okay. At this time, as our reorganization, reorganization meeting has concluded, we're going to immediately go into our public work session action meeting for this evening. Uh, roll call for the January 6th public work session action meeting. Mr. Copeland.
Here.
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Ms. Konico.
Here.
Dr. Morthe.
Here.
Dr. Park.
Here.
Ms. Ziccone. And Mr. Kismarski.
Here.
President's mouse, that's me now, wow. Right, adequate notice of agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News in the record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on January 6th, 2021 in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township. Would you like to make a salute to the flag?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next up, agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions on a new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you're asked to limit your questions to no more than one, and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. You specify the resolution you're referring to in your question. I have a motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. De Silva, seconded by Mr. Copeland. Okay, Mr. Kismarski, we'll give a moment for any questions to come in, either through the chat feature, or if there's any members in public participating that would like to verbally share something, just mention the chat, I'll open up the microphone, or raise your hand, we could activate the microphone that way as well. We'll give this about a minute to see if we have anything. There's one comment right now, but it's not on agenda items, so we'll hold that till the end of the meeting. Okay, all right, Mr. Kismarski, enough has come in, so at this time, you are okay to close the meeting to the public. Could I take a motion to close the meeting to the public? Ms. Konico, seconded by Mr. Gallo. Okay, Dr. Fitz, do you have a report for us?
Yes, I have a report. Thank you, thank you very much. Let me really. Okay, thanks a lot. Uh, let me just make my report would be fairly brief, but I'd like to wish all of you just a very pleasant new year under the circumstances in which we are living. But I really want to take this moment to say that we're kind of like at the midpoint of the school year. The first half of the school year was extremely challenging for us, but we responded to that challenge with good direction from you and good support from you, and we were able to engage the faculty, the community, and the children in our effort. We now are continuing that drive and that effort. During this intermission, we're taking the time to reflect on what we have accomplished and to do the planning for what we need to do to get through to the end of the school year. We've kind of broken this up into phases. Number one, we are inspecting our buildings to ensure that they are in full compliance and exceed the requirements to make those environments safe for children and for staff. We're monitoring them, visiting, visiting them, making any adjustments, any repairs that need to be done, and the staff is responding to that. We're looking at our technology. We've been able to take our technology from last year, make improvements on it, and we believe that we are fine, we are at the point of fine tuning it now. We believe that we are there, we have the bandwidth that we need, and that we are able to get our signals out, get our information out, and to get it back to us. We're looking at our curriculum in terms of how can we really engage more with kids and children from a socialization aspect? I believe we're doing pretty good over on the intellectual side, on the academic side, whether it's virtual or whether it's in class. But somehow, we've got to think about, how do we address the socialization needs of youngsters to make that, to do it in a very safe way? Is that we probably, if weather can break, maybe we can take more activities to the outside and let the kid have some space to be involved with their, with their peers. So, so we're working on these things, so we have a lot of challenges in front of us for the second half, okay? And that we're going to use this time to kind of like refuel ourselves and get ready for the youngsters who will be returning around the 18th and the 19th, the staff coming back on the 18th, I believe, and children coming back on the 19th. And we want to open up with the, with a lot of energy and, and the direction where we're going. And I'd like to again just thank you as a board for the support that you've given to us and your being available to us to confer with you when issues would come about. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fitz. Uh, Mr. Bleecker, you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, Mr. Kismarski, um, just want to say happy new year to members of the board, members of the Mawa community. The only item I wanted to report on this evening was just an update on the superintendent search process. The search firm that we are using to assist us, RPAT Solutions, provide me with the following statement that I can read for this evening to give an update both to the board and to the members of the community. The application window to receive letters of interest for the Mawa Superintendent Search closed on December 18th. The district received 26 applications from as far away as Florida. It included at least 13 standing superintendents and assistant superintendents. Interviews for the position are expected to begin later this month. The district also thanks members of the community that took time to complete the superintendent search survey. Over 900 responses were provided from staff, parents, and other community members who will provide invaluable information to the board as it moves through this process. Thank you, Mr. Kismarski, that is my report for this evening.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Fair, you have a report?
Yes, I do. Um, first, happy new year to everyone. Originally, I was, my only report was to say happy new year. But, um, you know, Dr. Fitz references, um, he referenced in his report the social emotional space for our kids, and right before this meeting, I was taken back to when I was a teach, a high school English teacher, and I'm, I'm really reminded or thinking about how our kids are feeling right now. Earlier today, we sent out a notice regarding the new year, and in that notice, we expressed the district that we are optimistic for 2021. Uh, but what I just viewed on the news in our country is what so many of our staff and students are viewing right now as this very meeting is taking place. The types of images that stoke fear and unease or unrest in our kids. I would like to go on record to our board and to our community that we will continue to do everything that we can to make every student feel safe and deserving here in Mawa, and to remind every kid that they matter, no matter what they hear or what they see that might attempt to indicate otherwise. And despite anything, I still, we still remain optimistic for the school year, the school district in the new year, and we will do everything we can to make it so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was great words. President's report. Uh, I will, uh, want to thank you all for putting me in this position, I think. I kid, I kid, I kid. But thank you so much. I'm honored to have the gavel. Look forward to this new year, and I wish you all a happy new year. I look forward to getting back in the schools with our children and our teachers as well. I too am optimistic about this coming year. You know, everything going on is a little crazy, but at the same time, we've got a vaccine rolling out. It'll be slowly. There's some hope in, hope in the future. Um, I want to congratulate Ms. Ziccone, Mr. De Silva, and Dr. Park victory in the November election, hard fought battle, and, uh, welcome, welcome, Dr. Park especially. I think you'll find us a fun bunch, and we do a lot of good work here for the, for the students and the teachers and the staff and the taxpayers, but it's definitely a good calling, and, and thank you for stepping up and putting your name out there, so. Uh, other than that, board committees are to be established on the January 20th meeting, so Kyle, I guess we'll have to put out the question that we've put out in the past if possible.
Yep.
As soon as humanly possible, so we can review that and get those in place by then. So you'll be receiving an email, I guess everyone from the panel before, Dr. Park to be receiving an email with to a Google questionnaire about what committees you'd like to be on and what your interests are, so hopefully we'll get that out soon. That's my report. I look forward to a good year. Thank you. Mr. Kismarski, we did leave committee reports on here, if there was any outstanding items from last year that any of the committees had to. Absolutely, does any, any committee members or committee chairs have any reports to update? Seeing none, board member remarks on other non-agenda items. Uh, Mr. Denise.
It's like a, congratulate you, Ben, and Rick, and Leslie. Obviously, the district in the borough is in very capable hands, and I'd also like to welcome Matt and congratulate him as well.
Okay, Brett, would you like to speak?
I want to wish everyone a very happy and healthy new year. Also want to congratulate Rick and Leslie on your reelections and welcome Matt to the board, looking forward to working with you. Also want to congratulate our counterparts in town, David May and Michelle Crowe Paz on their reelection, and Kim Bowlen on her newly elected or new councilperson seat. Also want to congratulate Jim Wysocki on mayor, and congratulate our very own Benjamin Kismarski on the appointment of business administrator in town. So, needless to say, this has been a very eventful week for Ben. I'm sure it's probably in the, in the very top level of, of Mawa pride for him, so congratulations and thank you for stepping up, President.
Thank you very much. Class of 93, representative. Any other board members? Uh, Mr. Gallo.
I'm asking if, if the predecessor's indulgence, if we could have a moment of reflection for the events of today, and to think about the bravery of our, of the Capitol Police officers and all those folks that tried to keep the insurrectionists out of the Capitol and to, and for the continued good operation of our government. They were sort of a hit on us, not since 1814, at the, during the War of 1812, has the Capitol been stormed, but, um, we bounced back from that, we'll bounce back from today, and, uh, the optimism that I have for our district is the optimism I have for the United States. So if we could have a moment of reflection for that, that heroism that we saw today.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, any other board members have remarks? Dr. Park? Absolutely.
Yeah, um, I just want to say thank you to all of you for the kind words and the congratulations and the welcome, um, and I'm ready and excited to get to work.
Okay, anyone else? All right, seeing none. Uh, moving on to number 14, old business minutes. Do I have a motion? Ms. Konico, seconded by Mr. De Silva. Okay, uh, roll call on minutes, item 14A, old business. Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Ms. Konico.
Yes.
Dr. Morthe.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Ziccone. And Mr. Kismarski.
Uh, yes.
All right, new business, uh, items A through H, I believe. Uh, do I have a motion? Mr. Copeland, seconded by Mr. Grace.
For roll call on items fifteen A through H, Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
Dr. Morthe.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Cohn. And Mr. Kuzmarsky.
Yes.
Item number sixteen, new business personnel, items A through K, do I have a motion? Ms. Cohn, seconded by Ms. Conoco.
Wait, real quick, we have, there are two Ks, I'm assuming the last one should be L.
Yes, through L.
And Mr. Kuzmarsky, if I may, I neglected to do this during my business administration report, there was one additional item added to this section, to section sixteen, for members of the public that are joining us remotely, this was not part of the, what was posted on the agenda on the website earlier this week. I will take a moment just to read it into the record for the benefit of those participants remotely that have a agenda that was posted on the website. Appointed, this is item D on the agenda, appointment leave replacement, resolve that upon, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Mawa Board of Education approves the appointment of Josephus Bavakua as leave replacement for employee nine-five-six-zero pursuant to New Jersey State Statute eighteen A colon sixteen dash one point one, effective January seventh, two thousand twenty-one, to January twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one. Salad should be column A, step six, fifty-seven thousand four hundred thirty-six dollars, prorated pending employment verification. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll do roll call, items sixteen A through L, was motioned by Ms. Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
Dr. Morthe.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Abstain.
Ms. Cohn. And Mr. Kuzmarsky.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to number seventeen, public questions or comments. This section of the public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes. Do I have a motion to open to the public? Mr. De Silva. By Mr. Copeland.
Okay. We have one member of the public with their hand raised, I'll open up the mic for them momentarily. We also have one comment that was written into the question answer feature. That first, from Mr. Robert Ferguson, twenty-three, a parent terrorist, no questions, just a heartfelt congratulations to the three board members sworn in tonight. I just would like to say thank you for your commitment to the education of the children in our town. I and many others appreciate your volunteerism. Furthermore, congratulations to Ben Kuzmarsky as the new board president. Mr. May, David May, has his hand raised, one moment, we'll give him the Mr. May, can you hear us? We want to test the audio.
Sure, David May, ninety-three, Owina Road.
We have you.
Great, just wanted to congratulate those that were elected in this past election, and want to wish you well in this new year, and also wanted to congratulate Mr. Kuzmarsky, who has probably had the most eventful week in the, in the town. And want to wish him well in his presidency, and look forward to seeing what the board does this year, and I look forward to working with all of you throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. May.
Mr. Kuzmarsky, with that, I do not have any other hands raised for comments verbally through the microphone and no other comments listed in the question answers, so I think we're okay to close the meeting to the public.
Do I have a motion to close the meeting? Mr. De Silva, seconded by Mr. Gallo. All right, may I have a motion to recess to executive session? Ms. Conoco, seconded by Mr. Copeland. To that, to that point, we will be not coming back out of the second session, correct?
Correct, there's no action to be taken following, following our executive session, so we're going to end the recording shortly and end this meeting.